Good evening, everyone. We're here for a public hearing. I have two items on the public hearing agenda for tonight. I'll read the header. The Board of Commissioners of the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee will conduct a public hearing and consider the following on November 10th, 2025 at 6:15 at City Hall located at 2425 North Mount Juliet Road. There are two items that actually cover the same parcel of land. The first one is an ordinance to amend the land use plan for 12.29 acres of property known as Hamilton Reserve on Lebanon Road map 53 parcel 44.01 for median density residential to their affair commercial. The second one is an ordinance to rezon the property located at Lebanon Road approximately 12.29 acres map 53 parcel 44.01 from RS 40 to CRC. The public is invited to attend and comment. If you have any comments for the Board of Commissioners on these two items, I'd ask you to come forward, give your name and address for the record, and we're here to take comments on these two items.
My name is Thomas Hinkson. I live at 5610 Tulloa Street. It's directly abutting that parcel of land. My notice here says it's 9.1, but you just said over 12 acres. I stand in opposition. It's directly in my backyard. You're going to put commercial land, a strip mall, right behind where I'm raising my family. If anybody decides to rob that place, they're going to run right through my yard. It's also right there where there's two school zones, one for WA Wright, one for Green Hill High School, and it's only two lanes in each direction. It's going to cause massive traffic jams. I don't think we're going to like the added people, the added congestion right on Lebanon Road, and as I said, the threat of crime. That's my opposition.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I actually have something written up, so I'll go ahead and write it. My name is Jasmine Mobley. I live at 5813 St. Charles Place. And I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about how this project could impact my home and my neighborhood, particularly when it comes to blasting, any ground movement, or any overall property damage. I've already experienced a big difficulty with blasting. There are cracks in my walls. There's stuff coming off of my ceiling. I have several issues in my home, and I just bought my home this year in March. So I'm wondering if you've considered the environmental impact and who's going to be responsible for any damages should this strip mall come or whatever it's going to be. I also stand in opposition for this because it's literally in my backyard.
Well, thank you for your comments.
My name's Brendan Hilker. I'm at 5625 Tulloa Street. I'm looking over the map parcel. I'm a little, I guess I would need more information about what the project is, where they're going to have roadside access. The only place that I see would be pretty much through my backyard. It's a school. It's, the property is right up against the school property. I don't feel like it's safe. It's a nice neighborhood. Kids are playing in the neighborhood. I'm not opposed completely to the project. However, I would be opposed for them to putting their main drive into the place through the backyard and in between my backyard and school's property. I feel like that little strip should have been annexed to the school perhaps. I know that their gate is pretty much right, right there. The, it's the piece that's going up to Marketplace. That small strip is their, their only access to the street, which is a busy street, especially during school zones. So I am opposed. I certainly would like more information about the project.
That's all right. Thank you, sir. Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we have any information on the project. It's a, it's a land use amendment and a rezon. Not that I'm aware of. Somebody want to correct me? Thank you. Sorry. Sorry, you can't, you can't speak past public hearing, but we'll give you another opportunity in just a few minutes to do it.
Hello, thank you. My name is Sandra Robinson, and I live at 5202 Levon Place in the Marketplace Town Homes. And I too am opposed, at least at present, because it looks like the road is coming right through our small subdivision, and we are besieged on every side. From the Green Hills High School, when I moved there, it was 20 years ago. So we accept WA Wright in that traffic, but now it's very unsafe and lots of speeding. And so we are very concerned about it. We want to know, or at least I would like to know, what consideration does the council give our neighborhoods? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any questions or, excuse me, any comments on the two items?
Good evening. My name is Michael Welborn. I've lived at 5433 Orleans Avenue for the past seven years. As other neighbors have mentioned, we've had blasting all around our neighborhood that's damaged our houses. And seeing this built right next to our homes, literally 15 feet from my house is something that I'm opposed to. I'm opposed to losing the majority of the tree line that provides a buffer from the noise from Lebanon Road and from privacy from being able to see from Lebanon Road. And I'm also opposed to losing the field and having that replaced with driveways and concrete and asphalt.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Eileen Greppel-Pal at 5510 Creole Place. I'm opposed to the rezoning for all the reasons that the neighbors have cited. And really, the main thing is the safety. There are small children in the neighborhood as it is. Many, many people are speeding. I'm a walker. And every day I observe people speeding, and it's a big safety issue. So that's where I stand on this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the items? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll reconvene at 6:30 for our regular scheduled meeting. There'll be a portion in that part of the meeting shortly after we get started for citizen comments. So if you have more you'd like to add, we'd welcome you back to the podium at that point. But unlike the planning commission, we take comments at the beginning of the meeting. So if you have something to, to add or say at that time, we want not take citizen comments on the agenda items, but we do have a period at the beginning of the meeting that we will. So with that, we're going to adjourn the public hearing, and we'll reconvene in a few minutes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Mount Juliet Board of Commissioners. Today is November 10th. I will call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. We do have a quorum present according to City Code 62210, so we'll be conducting the business of the City of Mount Juliet. Our first item on our agendas, and if you need a copy of the agenda, we have them in the wire baskets over to the side. Our first item is to set the agenda to formalize what's before us. I'm going to, we've got three requests, our three items have got requests for deferrals to the December 8th meeting, which was 9E, 9F, and 9G, which is Charlie's Place. And the second one is the proposal down on Lebanon, between Lebanon Dirt Road and Division Street. So if there's no objections, I'd like to set those as deferred until December 12th. So hearing. Sorry. Which, that would be a month. December 8th. 9E, 9G, and 9F. All right, hearing no objections to those three, we'll set those as deferred until December 8th. If you're here for those items, you're welcome to stay, and we're going to open up for citizen comments if you would like to make a comment about those. The next, the next changes I'd like to propose would be moving 9B, 9C, 9D, 9H, 9J, and 9L to consent. B, C, D, H is in Henry, J is in James, and L is in Lima. Yes, ma'am. HJ, then L. So it's 9B, 9C, 9D, 9H, 9J, and 9L. Any objections? Sure. 9B, 9C, 9D, 9H, 9J, 9L. I'm not seeing any, I'm not hearing any objections. So without objection, we will move those six items to consent. Is there any objection to adopting the agenda elsewise as published? All right, hearing none, the agenda then is set without objection. The next item under the thing, is there invocation and pledge of allegiance? I'd like to ask our city manager if you would lead us in the invocation and pledge, sir.
Yes, Mayor. Everybody bow your heads before him. Remove your hats. Gracious Lord, we come together with a shared purpose and ask your presence to unite us. May peace reign in our hearts as we discuss matters before us. Help us listen with empathy, speak with kindness, and work collaboratively towards our common goals. May your peace be the foundation of all our interactions. In Jesus Christ's name you pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. The next item is the approval of the minutes from our 1027 meeting. I will move that we adopt the minutes, the copy that was presented at the table, which has. Yeah, there was the change, the change was I was talking about the utilities didn't apply to the non-continuous annexation. It got recorded as, I didn't, I didn't think the commissioner, the county commissioner was right about the TCA. So I said that needs to be struck. That's not what I said. That was the change I asked for. Were there any other changes? I will go on the record again saying I have no reason to not believe what Commissioner Bree said, so. All right, without objection, we'll adopt the, the copy of the minutes that are at the table. Hearing no objections, those are adopted. Next item on our agenda is the citizen, citizen comments. At this point, we're going to open up the floor for citizen comments. I would just ask that you, when you come to the table, that you get, or excuse me, the podium, that you give your name and address for the record. That you try to keep the items based on city-related business. And I request you keep it G-rated or PG at least. So with that, I'd ask you to come forward, give your name and address, and for your comments. I'll just, I'll just add, I said it in the public hearing, but I just want to be clear, we don't take comments at the items. So this is your opportunity to address the commission. Name and address, please.
Jeremy M. Jernigan, 1006 Clearview Drive. Here for the support for Commissioner Heffner on the high-density housing pause that moratorium. Just some facts that I found online. Current population of Mount Juliet is about 40,000. Population in 2000 was 14,000. All right, that is a very big leap that we have come in a very short period of time. During that time, there's been one major therapier added to the city Golden Bear, which is great, by the way, but there's no high-density housing. So that corridor doesn't get used a whole lot for high-density housing. All that traffic still is coming down Mount Juliet Road, which leads me to my next point. I left Walmart the other day, and it took me 20 minutes to go a mile down the road. One mile, 20 minutes. I got a receipt from Walmart timestamp, and I can show you the camera where I pulled into my house. One mile, 20 minutes. What are we doing? Ridiculous, guys. Not every property needs to be some type of high-density housing, okay? It's okay to have green spaces. We like green spaces. We like to be able to get out and do things without having to look at a hotel or an apartment complex or a overly populated neighborhood. According to the Mount Juliet website, from 2015 to 2018, one new resident was added every eight and a half hours to the city of Mount Juliet. All right, that's a very big number. I understand growth is needed. Growth is welcome, but we need to think about how we're growing. Are we growing smartly, or are we just saying, let's open it up to everybody? As a citizen who's born and raised here, it is very frustrating to see some of the things, traffic-wise, that we have to deal with on a daily basis. No matter which direction I leave from Clearview Drive, I'm sitting in traffic. Whether I go to North Mount Juliet, whether I go through Providence, it's just part of it, and it gets kind of frustrating because I don't see it getting any better anytime soon unless we put a stop to this high-density housing. So everyone's, I am here to support Scott, and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else to, or comments for the board? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen comments. I will move to commissioner reports and comments. Commissioner Heffner, you're recognized.
All right, threw me off there. One minute, switched up the order. First of all, thank you all for coming out this evening and for those watching online. Christmas is approaching very fast, so please shop local. Also, the weather is starting to dip into the freezing temperature range, so please, please reach out to, to your elders, grandparents, if they live at home, please be mindful of them. Also, thoughts and prayers to the family and friends of Alan, Alan Williams, who lost his life tragically Saturday in the helicopter crash, and also praying for the two that are still fighting for their lives. So anyways, thoughts and prayers go out to them and hope, hoping for a speedy recovery. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Malale, you're recognized for five minutes.
Okay, thank you. So in anticipation of an agenda item not getting a second, I'm going to go ahead and give comments on it now. It's regarding the one-year moratorium on high-density and multifamily residential. On the surface, it sounds good, and I see face, on Facebook where many residents are behind it without realizing the implications something like this would have. Therefore, I feel that you should know some things about how it would impact the city that you live in. You think high-density is apartments. Think again. It also includes some single-family homes and for-sale townhomes. First, it's the market that controls growth, not government. Let's talk about poor planning and lack, lack of infrastructure, which is all over social media. This ordinance says that these residential zoning districts may strain public infrastructure. So let's be clear. With the exception of our capital road widening projects and TDOT projects, the city of Mount Juliet gets infrastructure, including road improvements from development at their expense. Old Lebanon Dirt Road widening on the east side, Beckwith Point, where the road extension is connecting Beckwith Road at the ER to Blenda Parkway. This will take the pressure off the four-way at South Rutland. Bender's Ferry, another example, known as a road, another example. A portion of Pleasant Grove Road, another. Townhomes on Lebanon Road paying for South Green Hill improvements. Yes, all these except Beckwith Point include single-family residential as well, high-density as well as multifamily. Providence Parkway, the five-lane extension to Central Pike and realignment of Adams Lane. Yes, apartments are included in Providence Central, but that's what paid for this infrastructure. Commissioner Heffner voted against the infrastructure. Again, no taxpayer money. So yes, developers do pay millions for infrastructure. Infrastructure that comes from development takes the burden off of taxpayers having to fund the infrastructure otherwise. That would add many more years before ever seeing any results. This moratorium would stop infrastructure, period. Second, this moratorium is insane, as it would have devastating effects on the city. Bottom line is, not only would it cause property tax revenue reduction, but sales tax revenue, revenues would take a major hit in addition to the already slowed rate at the present time, as I pointed out, pointed out during the budget talks. Commissioner Heffner has to know this, especially since he is an investor and developer of development projects here in the city limits. The reason for this makes zero sense. This moratorium would cut the feet out from under the city. Based on the residential map that he posted on Facebook, he voted for many more of these projects than he voted against. This moratorium is hypocritical at best. Commissioner Heffner is the one who pushed very hard to reduce the 20-acre minimum requirement for multifamily down to 10 acres citywide. That would have resulted in mass expansion of multifamily across the entire city with very little road improvements, I might add. Thankfully, it didn't pass. Again, very hypocritical. He also buys and sells property and ends up voting to rezon that property. This ordinance includes sewer issues in the northeast section, which is at capacity. Development in this area is already given, so you don't need an ordinance for that. When you stop development in these zoning districts, you stop retail. Retail survives on rooftops. Retail would not want to move into a city where is, where there is a moratorium on rooftops. If it weren't for rooftops, we would not have any big-box retail, including Costco, Texas Roadhouse, BJ's, Rooms to Go, Sprouts, and Bowlin Alley, and many others that are potentially looking at building here. When you live in a city that literally survives on sales tax, this moratorium would be devastating. When a city can't survive on sales tax, the property taxes get When a city can't survive on sales tax, the property taxes get increased. Nobody likes taxes. But the bottom line is you can't fund a city without them. Mount Juliet would never be what it once was and I've been here 40 years. Nothing stays the same, especially when voters passed the liquor by the drink in 2000. Wilson County was an entire dry county before that. You got the liquor, but it also brought in the growth. We are a city that is about to have three exits off the interstate. This is about the survival of the city of Mount Juliet. What would it cost the city over a period of this one year? I would hate to know. I am only, I can only hope that, that this senseless ordinance does not get a second motion on the floor and dies for a lack of support. Am I out of time?
I didn't record the start. What do you, what do you have, did you recorder? I'd say you're close if you're not over.
Okay. Well, anyway, we're having a tree lighting it on November 18th at five, starts at five. And so that'll kind of kick off the season and let's see. Commissioner Giles is going to mention the other, the light, light walk. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I am with that. We'll recognize Commissioner Giles.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm also, what you said, Commissioner Hefner, about the people, the guy who lost his life in that that plane crash, helicopter crash, we were out of town on an annual trip and so he came on the phone and so we actually prayed for them up there on that retreat. I had on mine to congratulate Jason Brockman and Jacob Dean for becoming captains. They've been promoted in the police department to captains. And that's a big honor and I just wanted to say congratulations publicly for them. Also wanted to mention and it, I think we may have it up here. What you said, Commissioner Malley, about the tree lighting. We've got two things that we wanted to bring to your attention. The tree lighting is November the 18th down here at the train station area. It starts at five o'clock. So it was great last year, so please bring your family and, and, and there, you know, there'll be vendors there to, to, I know one of my favorite coffee ones going to be there, should say Americano, but anyway, love to see, please come out, bring your family. It's a great family event. We also have the BPAC Christmas Light Walk. We start at Willoughby Station. It starts, it's on December the 15th at six o'clock. And the Mount Juliet High School Band will be playing a few numbers that night before we start walking. If you've never participated in this walk, please bring your family. There's a whole different perspective to walking and seeing Christmas lights than they are driving to see it. We have good fellowship, one with another, and it's just a great, last year it snowed. It was almost like you're looking at Hallmark. But it was, it's really great. So I hope that y'all can make these two. Thank y'all for coming out tonight. Mayor, that completes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks. We'll recognize our vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for everybody coming out tonight and also the folks that are online. Yeah, we do have a big agenda tonight and a lot of different topics, obviously, to kick it off for, you know, for the agenda, though, just want to make sure that with all the different events that we have, our PIO officer has done a great job at continuing his, his communication out there. So if you're on social media, take an opportunity to see what Justin Beasley shared, so that way you can all make sure that your friends and family show up along with making sure that you're on time, so that way you're not rushing. I know how it is, bringing kids to these events, it's always a good time. So. As Commissioner Malley talked about, sales tax versus property tax, shopping local is important for all of us. You know, that's, that's obviously a hot topic, especially with this recent property tax increase. And now we're talking about potentially slowing down, you know, some additional growth. So it's kind of counterintuitive, but at the same time, a lot of folks have reached out to me here the last couple of days. And it is hard to tell the whole story, especially when you don't know the whole story, but there's a lot to take in. I'm looking forward to doing a deeper dive on some of these topics. Veterans Day is tomorrow, so for all the veterans that are out there that have served, thank you for your services and all the ones that are continuously serving. Thank you. Once again, those are the men and women that are protecting our borders, giving us the ability to have meetings like we are tonight as well as our Sunday services. All these things that we have, we take for granted each and every day. Most of us shouldn't do it, but hopefully we appreciate what we do have. So thanks to all the men and women that are out there. Some of the hot topics continuously just talk about for the, for the students, the parents that are leaving early, please, folks. I'm still getting a lot of calls when it comes down to early morning safety. Whether if it's construction, contractors, even our residents that live in these communities. Mount Juliet Police has been asked to monitor certain hot areas. So if you continue to have issues, you witness things, please bring it to our attention. To the, to our MJ staff there. I can't talk enough about it when it comes down to safety, you know, for these kids, you know, they're trying to get themselves to the bus. And we still have cars and contractors that are bypassing these, you know, these buses, red stop signs. So please take your time, get to work on time, but also don't rush and think about the students that are trying to get to, to class that morning. Couple more things, a real quick, you know, one more thing to help our local police. As we start looking at the holidays right around the corner, folks, lock your cars. We've got, we're butted right up to some, some other cities that don't take safety like we do, but in order to help relieve some of the pressures, put your things away. If you're going into the store, keep your cars locked and if you see something, say something, you know, you're the eyes and ears to the public. We all know what it's supposed to look like and if we have issues, please reach out to the non-emergency line. And then the last thing, Mayor, just want to, just thank everyone for, you know. My apologies, I was going down my list here and I lost it. You know, for the folks that came out tonight just to share some of the, the details of our growth of our city. It's amazing to see how many people that have moved here each and every year from going from 14,000 to 40,000. And I know those numbers are a little bit low, but you know, as Commissioner Malley had talked about tonight, it's going to be a hot topic for exactly what a lot of you have came into, which was asking for our roads to be developed. We are behind, we know it. We're looking for every opportunity to take the burden off the taxpayers and look for these roads to be improved. Every commissioner up here is, is, is taking notes on what you residents are asking for and we just got to find that good balance. So please continue to reach out to us, give us your ideas, your thoughts, and we'll do our best job up here. So thank you. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I'll say for my comments, I've heard too, some comments about the infrastructure and stuff around the city and, you know, we're not blind to the fact that stuff is congested in many areas around here, but we also know we have, we have the responsibility to try to get to it and unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, I don't know what the, depends on which way you look at it, but the fact is, is you can't get to the interstate on this side of the county unless you go through the city of Mount Juliet, whether it's whether it's over Golden Bear or Mount Juliet Road. There's a lot of growth that goes around, around us. I, I think we do a good job of holding people accountable when they want to develop here. Millions of dollars have been collected in terms of infrastructure improvements that quite frankly would cut, fall on the burden of the taxpayers too. And the reality is with some of the stuff that's being built around us, we try to repurpose the development around us to put back into infrastructure, but we're and if we don't build anything in the city of Mount Juliet, the traffic is still here. When the last time I collect, got a report for the adequate facilities tax, and that's the tax that every residential unit paid to the county into it, the growth rate, Mount Juliet accounted for about 10% of Wilson County's growth. At the time, Lebanon was showing about 70% of the growth. So the other 20% was coming through the unincorporated areas. You don't have to go far, once you get off of I-40 to get outside the city limits. Central Pike could do it. Go past it, you're out in the county. Everything that you see out there, the growth, the development out there, it funnels into the Providence area. And if we stop everything we do, the growth still continues around us. We see, we see traffic coming through here now from as far down as Rutherford, cutting through Mount Juliet to get to the interstate and we have to step up. The state of Tennessee is $2 billion behind and that was the last numbers I saw on a back, infrastructure backlog. If we don't bring something to the table to do it with, we don't get consideration on these items because there are other cities out there that work with the state to get ahead of us. We try to use these, these developments and use their investments, whether it's improvements, building new roads, extending roads, widening dedications of right-of-way, actual voluntary contributions they give to us. We use those monies a lot of times to work with the state and secure those things so that our projects are more appealing. If you look at the traffic that's setting outside of Mount Juliet on Mount Juliet Road, no one in, that lives in these apartments there by the interstate drove outside the city few miles, did a U-turn and said, I'm going to come right back into town. That didn't happen. Those, that comes from people that are either out there or not in the city. But the thing, the reality is, is none of those people can get to the interstates unless they come to the city. So we have to have a way to pay for that growth to do it. And when it comes to a moratorium, it, it, it sounds good when someone says, no more multifamily and no more townhomes, but that's not what that ordinance says. That ordinance says no RM16, no, no RM8, no R10, no RS10, no RS15, no CTC. What, what does that look like on a practical map here? That means you couldn't build any of Belinda City. That would be the moratorium against Belinda City. You'd have a moratorium against Del Webb. You'd have a moratorium against that. Don't worry about being in traffic from Walmart because that wouldn't be allowed either under this moratorium. You've got all kinds of commercial through here you couldn't build. Willoughby Station, there's a moratorium against you now. Hickory Hills, South Green Hill Road Development, Moratorium, Brookstone. That's what this moratorium, when you get down to it. So when the question comes to me, is this what you want to vote for? Well, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to live in a city too where there's less density and more green space, but that moratorium is not the answer to get to it. What this moratorium, the questions I'm asked is, for a year, do you want to say? Can't do a Walmart, can't do a Sprouts. Is that really what we're wanting to get to? Because a large portion, about 70% of our budget, I believe, comes from sales tax related. If I'm not bringing in more sales tax, I still have the exact same expenses and a lot of times. And the only place that this board has to collect funds by just simply majority vote, the only place that I have to collect funds is a property tax. All these other things, raising sales tax rates, all this other stuff, that by law goes through referendum. Impact fees, all these other things that get discussed. There isn't just a simple majority vote. There's lots of other stuff that happens on it. So. To me, the, the moratorium, the way it's written is probably legislative malpractice. I don't think it's a fair question to ask these members of this board, do you support this? And, and phrase it as this is a moratorium against townhomes and apartments. Because we all know that sells real well in the press and everybody wants to line up and get on board with that, but the devil is in the details. And with that, I'm going to recognize our city manager.
I, with, my, my points are, this is exactly why I was picked first. This has gone out of order. District three, he wanted to get his points across. I've got minutes left on my commissioner report to address items where my name was specifically mentioned by Commissioner Malley and I have an opportunity to address those.
Your, your point's not well taken. There is no prescribed order for which the commissioners go.
Well, you've been, you've been starting with district one for the past three, four months. And you chose me to go first, so everybody can get their, I know you, you muted my mic. This is what's going on. These are the games that are being played here in city halls.
No, 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 listen. Correct.
And, and I'm going to make one more point, I'm going to speak up loud enough.
Your mics.
If I don't get a second on this, if I don't, she's already said, I'm not going to get a second on it. So that is a clear violation of sunshine law. Clear violation of the sunshine law.
This is out of order, you're both out of order. City manager, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners. Thanks everybody for coming out tonight. Thanks for your passion for showing up to the meeting, to your public. It's good to see a lot of familiar faces, serving here 36 years, very proud of that. Seen a lot of dear friends, even see Sergeant Atwood, where's he at back on the back? Is he still there? Sergeant Atwood back there, served about 36 years, Sarge? 33. He was my trainer when I came on. Zach, that was me and about seven officers. Thank you, Sarge, for all your service. Can I get a show of hands for all the veterans in the room? Okay, raise them but good and, good and high. God bless you. This, this commission today, and I'm thankful for the elected body up here. We've been trying for years to get a, a veterans memorial area. You know, there's other places around town to have veterans memorial, but we wanted a city one. And to Ms. Gwen Queener and, and Ms. Carol Kaelin, they worked hard with the city for years and years. We tried to do fundraisers and things that nature. There's a lot of other people I deserve a lot of credit. My dad, James Martin Senior, and my father-in-law, Thomas Ed Potts out of Crossville, Tennessee, he'd have been 100. My dad's still living, but he was in the army and he went on to later serve in the Air National Guard. A lot of years dedicated, a lot of his years of his life for that. And my father-in-law, who came from the greatest generation ever, served in World War II and saw some very horrendous things, right? And I'm thankful for that and that's why your city is, everybody says, what's patriotic? And that's up to each individual person, it's room to decide, right? But a lot of you in here that are family members of veterans, thank you for your sacrifices as well. So when we got out today and got to dedicate our memorial wall, we added 100 names to it today from veterans in this community that have loved ones that served in service, so we can have the freedoms that we've got in this very city. And so, Commissioner, I want to thank each of you because that wouldn't have come to fruition without your support. Very thankful for that. Everything we do in the city where you sell the banners and the flags, it's because a lot of there's a little bit of an attack on the American flag in this country and we're just not going to let that happen. Nor we're going to let anybody attack our citizens, which is why we have what I feel like is the best police department. Your safety is paramount and where you live matters. Right? And without you being here, it's just, it's just a place on a map. Everybody agree with that? So because I'm speaking to safety, one of the commissioners wanted to make sure that I pointed this out. This year, we're going to do something that we've never done in our city's history. We're not going to be able to throw candy. And then, and that's my fault. That's our fault as a city. And the reason we did that is for public safety. We're afraid a little kid will run out and somebody will get hurt. And we unfortunately had a child that was killed a couple, a few years back now, if you guys recall, tragically in our parade. So we're trying to enhance our safety. So the commission said, we want to do something bigger and better than we've ever done in the past. So everybody's got children, raise your hand, or if you had children and they're all grown, okay? How many of you have grandchildren? Okay, we're asking you to bring every child you can, even if it's a neighbor's child, to our VIP section, which is going to be at the clock tower where we just put the Christmas tree up at the end of last week. And we have two donors that have gracefully stepped up. $9,000 in total, one sponsoring the candy for next year's parade. And there's two sponsoring candy for this year's parade. $5,000 candy is a lot of candy. Y'all agree with that? So I'd like to thank Dave Rowland of Rowland Sign Company out of Cookeville, Tennessee, for stepping up and donating $5,000, which is already in the city coffers. Mr. Greg Fast and the Fast Family from York Road, a local resident, has one of the largest families in Mount Juliet, Tennessee. I call them Mount Juliet royalty. They donated $1,000. So I'm asking if you can part with your kids and grandkids as close you can get to that clock tower, because if, if your kids are looking forward to meeting Santa, he's going to be there that day at the conclusion of the parade and he's going to get, obviously going to be taking pictures and loving on the kiddos. And the helpers, everybody up here at the table that's a helper, Santa's helpers, Santa called and asked if I could find some helpers. So where's our Santa's helpers up there at the table? Can y'all raise your hands up? There's still kids at heart, but there's five of them sitting up there. It's our elected officials. They're going to be Santa's helpers. So when the parade concludes, not only are they going to be giving candy out during the parade, instead of throwing it, they're going to be coming to the sidewalks and handing it out. So get in line there and if you can't make that, make the after, after parade event, VIP event, if you could do that for me, I think you guys get a big kick out of it. So we're very blessed to call Mount Juliet home. We're very blessed, as I spoke at the veterans event today, it was very cold. So for all the people that came out and braved that and all the family members and the veterans, there was a gentleman there the day to show what a small world it is. And he came up to me, he said, are you kin to Jean and L.A. Fox out of Crossville, Tennessee? She was an English teacher. She just turned 95 last week and L.A. Fox, who unfortunately passed away a few years ago. And he was the tennis coach and one of the teachers and this 88-year-old veteran came up to me and said, are you related to them? this 88-year-old veteran came up to me and said, are you related to them? And I said, yes, sir, I am, and he said, well, uh, Ms. Jean was my elementary, uh, or, uh, English teacher, so you know how needed it is to have somebody that's still alive at 90 few years old, and have 88-year-old veteran come up to you and say that your, uh, uh, aunt was his teacher? And I said, do you remember Thomas E. Potts? And he said, yes, I do, he was my principal, and I said, is that so? And I said, well, was he your high school football coach too, and also the girls' basketball coach? He said, yeah, and I said, he'd have been 100 this year, do you remember? And I said, yeah, and I said, I'm wearing his suit, the suit I'm wearing today was Dad's, this suit's almost as old as I am, and I'm nearly 61 years old, ain't that pretty cool? It's a small world that it really is, and how truly blessed we really are to call Mount Juliet, Tennessee, the state of Tennessee and the United States of America our home. God bless America, God bless city of Mount Juliet, and God bless you all, and Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir, and with that, we will move to our consent agenda, I will read the items, under unfinished business consent agenda 8A, an ordinance to amend the land use plan for 12.29 acres of property known as Hamilton Reserve on Lebanon Road, map 53, parcel 44.01, from median density residential to thoroughfare commercial, 8B, an ordinance to rezone the property located at Lebanon Road, approximately 12.29 acres, map 53, parcel 44.01, from RS40 to CRC, uh, 9B, an ordinance to amend, to amend ordinance 2452 to grant relief for certain conditions of the previously approved preliminary master development plan, PMDP, last amended on November 24th to allow full access driveways on collector roads between Golden Bar Gateway and Beckwith Road and Boyd Public Works Conditions 9, 11H, and 13, 9C, which is an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately 5.21 acres of property at 3971 Beckwith Road, map 78, parcel 21.06, the property being located within the city's urban growth boundary, uh, 9D, an ordinance to rezone property located at 3971 Beckwith Road, approximately 5.21 acres, map 78, parcel 21.06 from Wilson County R1 to CI Commercial Interchange, 9H, which is an ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, the portion of road and right-of-way located at South Green Hill Road from the existing city limits near Lebanon Road intersection to the southeastern property corner of parcel 53, 152, in Wilson County, Tennessee, located within the city's urban growth boundary, uh, 9, oh, I circled the wrong one, 9J, which is an ordinance to accept the donation for the Mount Juliet Parks Department to allocate the funds for park special events, and 9L, a resolution authorizing that Kenneth D. Martin, Dana Hire, and Michael Mullins are the official and authorized two sign checks and withdraw funds for the city of Mount Juliet, is there a motion on the consent? Have a motion to second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye, any opposed? The consent agenda does pass. We'll move to, um, move to our first item under new business, which was 9A, an ordinance to amend Part B of the Unified Development Code of the city of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, known as zoning regulations, ordinance 200129 adopted October 8, 2001, as amended by amending Article 8, 207, and 3, minimum lot area in PUD overlay districts. Is there a motion? Hearing none, 9A dies for lack of motion. The next item is 9I, an ordinance to amend Part B of the Unified Development Code of the city of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, known as zoning regulations, ordinance 200129 adopted October 8, 2001, as amended by amending Article, uh, 14, public notices, section 14, 1094. A motion? And a second? Uh, my apologies, my Roman numerals weren't up to speed on that, so took me a second. Got a motion, a second, Commissioner Hefner, I believe this is under your sponsorship, so you recognize if you like the floor.
Yes, so what, what we're doing on, on this is we're, we're currently following state guidelines when it comes to public notices, um, for as long as I can remember, we used to post signs out prior to the public, um, planning commission meeting on rezones, and I would like to revert to that, back to that, simple as that, currently what we do is we place sign, we issue certified letters to the properties that touch the rezoned property, which could be maximum of three, um, and that's done 10 days, two weeks prior to the second BOC reading, so what I'm doing is attempting to revert back to giving public notice, signs in the ground 10 days prior to a planning commission reading, um, so that's what this is, simple as that, providing more notification to the public when properties that, um, are near to them are being considered for a rezon prior to, uh, the planning commission.
Question for, for John, is this going to be at the cost to the developer to do?
Yes.
Okay, and, and, uh, just a crazy scenario that I, I wondered as I was reading this section, if somebody, if somebody removes the sign, uh, as long as they provide evidence, they put it out, it's, that's what's important?
Correct.
So, so people don't go pull the signs up, it won't stop it, that's what you're saying?
We do, yes, we get calls when they, sometimes when they go away or they're missing too, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's my only questions. Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye, aye, any opposed? 9I does carry. The next item on the agenda is 9K, an ordinance to enact a one-year moratorium on the acceptance and approval for high-density and multifamily residential developments in the city of Mount Juliet, Tennessee. And that dies for a lack of second, the next item on the agenda, you're out of order, sir. Next item on the agenda is 9M, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between ADP and the city of Mount Juliet for an HR and payroll software system? Motion? And a second, questions or comments on 9M? All right, all in favor of 9M, please signify by saying aye, any opposed? Oh, you have a question, I apologize. Not for that. Okay, let's do that again, all in favor of 9M, please signify by saying aye, aye, any opposed? 9M does carry. Commissioner, 9A did not receive a, a motion. A, A and 8B were adopted through consent.
All right.
I'll make a motion to reconsider 9A.
Yes, second.
All right. So I guess that means 9A is on the table.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that, I thought we were on 8A and 8B, um, so this is a uh, ordinance to amend the zoning to, uh, reduce the minimum lot size from 10,000 to 7,500, so when this was a pass, what, a year, a couple, whenever it was, years ago, um, I didn't support it because I felt like this was going to drive development out into the county where they wouldn't be subject to, uh, to, um, certain things, and that, you know, we couldn't get, um, road improvements, we're, all we end up with is traffic coming into the city, so I did not support it, so, um, I am supporting this to go back to, uh, to reverse that. Yeah, so that's all I wanted to say.
Well, I appreciate that, I didn't, I didn't vote for the minimum lot requirements either, at the time I said, uh, I don't know why I don't support this, but I don't know why we don't, I don't, I didn't like it, but I've seen the effects of this, this is, this is really kind of pins people in the corner to push people to bring through CMU multifamily to get around the PUD, and that's, that's, that's been the result of it, um, my other concerns that I've come to consider over time is just the cost of, of infrastructure, um, more roads to connect the same number of houses, uh, the cost of those roads fall back on the taxpayers to take care of, I know the developers build them initially, but we got to, you guys get to pay to repay them and all the other stuff that goes along with that, so, uh, wasn't in favor, you said this sets it back to the way it does, I don't think that's totally factual, it reduces it.
It reduces it, yes.
But, that's my thoughts. Any other questions or comments? All right, we're ready up, all in favor of 9A, please signify by saying aye, aye, any opposed? Uh, 9A does pass by a vote of three to two.
All right, now for verification, since I thought that you were on 8A and 8B when 9A came up.
Yes, ma'am.
So what exactly happened on 8A and 8B?
8A and 8B were adopted alongside of 9B, 9C, 9D, 9H, 9J, and 9AL, as we moved those six items onto consent with those two.
I got you, okay.
So with that, our next item on the agenda, or last item on the agenda is adjournment, uh, without objection, hearing none, we are adjourned.